Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of August 20th, 2024. Let the roll call show that Councilmember Graff and Chair Ritchie both, oh, I get this really wrong every time, they're just not going to be here tonight. They asked to be excused tonight. Jeez. I don't know. It always sounds bad when I say it. With that, I will turn the time over to Councilmember Myers to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence with me. We have a couple of acknowledgements. And before we get Fernando to come up here, are there any acknowledgements from the council members before we? All right, well, you can think of that. And then if not, Fernando's standing behind the pillar there.
Mayanodolski, Vice Chair White, and team members of the council. Nice to see you once again. We are here to honor some of the members of our community, as long with you, and recognizing their work. In honor of National Night Out Against Crime and Work Humanitarian Day, I would like to present an individual and an organization making a lot of difference in Ogden City for the council to recognize. First, Laura Adeline. Laura Adeline has worked in the social services field with the justice involved population for over 10 years. And I forgot to mention, I'm accompanied here by my fellow Commissioner Lucia Madrigal. So she's coming as we're part of this. Again, I'll start again. Laura Adeline has worked in the social services field with the justice involved population for over 10 years. She is the Chair and Founder of the Weaver County Community Reentry Coalition, Vice Chair of the Weaver Morgan Local Homeless Council, and an active participant of the Weaver Morgan Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and Intergenerational Poverty Coalition, and is a training facilitator for trauma-informed approaches in the criminal justice system. Laura has worked for the Weaver County Sheriff's Office as Assistant Use Counselor for state female inmates, and worked on programs and services for inmates housed in the Weaver County Correctional Facility to support their reentry into our community, such as an expansion to the Community Reentry Program. The Community Reentry Program utilizes a collaborative boundary span model with multiple community partners and organizations that includes assessments, case management, forensic peer recovery coaching, support from booking through the early stages of reentry into our community. This program is rapidly becoming a model for the state and even for the nation, I may say. In addition, Laura is providing administrative oversight for the development and implementation for a program that provides medication and addiction treatment for those who struggle with alcohol and opiate use, a residential treatment program for inmates with co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders, and a permanent supportive housing program targeted to jail reentry population. The Weaver County Community Reentry Coalition works to improve the process of reentry. One of the most notable achievements is the creation of the Reentry Resource Fair, which is weekly, is a weekly event, and have a variety of services and providers from other organizations in our community, including the Ogden Regional Center, and to support justice-involved individuals and those who have previously been incarcerated access the resources they need. Laura reflects her strong belief of complex issues that cannot be solved by a single entity and requires a collaborative effort. I just have a conversation with Laura this week, and I was very impressed by her desire to do systematic change from early in her career, and I'm really proud to present that name to you. On the other hand, we have the Joyce Hansen Hall Food Bank. The Joyce Hansen Food Bank is operated by the Catholic Community Services of Northern Utah. It's a vital resource dedicated to addressing the food insecurity in our region. Name in honor of local philanthropist Joyce Hansen, this food bank provides essential full assistance to individuals and family in need. This food bank serves as a hub for distribution of food donations from various sources, including local groceries, community donations, the National Food Bank network. It offers a range of services, including emergency food boxes, nutrition education, holiday meal, and assistance with enrolling in food assistance programs like SNAP. The food bank operates with the help of numerous volunteers and partners who are committed to alleviate hunger and support the well-being of our community. Through his dedicated efforts, the Joyce Hansen Hall Food Bank plays a crucial role in ensuring that no one in the area gets hungry. And I can give you some numbers. From July 1st, 2023 to June 30, 2024, CCS has assisted 129,291 individuals with food, distributed 2.7 million pounds of food, provided 66,851,000 meals to children, distributed 305 baby supplies to low-income families, and have 5,300 volunteers contribute a total of 14,263 hours to support those in need through the food bank. I may add as well that they currently going to have in the month of September a food drive to continue getting the food needed, especially in a time where it's difficult to obtain food in our community. And to receive this is Randy Chappell, who's the Executive Director of CCS here in northern Utah. And with that, I present for your consideration this two recognizance.
Are they in there?
Yeah, so let Laura come first. And then Randy.
Sure, yes.
Great, yeah, absolutely.
Right here. Right here.
From the boundary, this side.
Go closer. There we go. There we go. Perfect. Okay. All right, council members, find the window. All right, perfect. One, two, three. Maybe another. Thank you.
Yeah, so Laura and Randy, you want to come up and just quickly?
Say something?
Say anything. Well, not anything.
Do you want to go first?
Doesn't matter.
Go for it, go for it.
So as you know, my name is Randy Chappell. I'm the Director of Basic Needs Ogden. On behalf of the staff of the Joyce Hansen Hall Food Bank, we are very grateful to be recognized for this wonderful achievement. I'm glad that we're here to help those in need. You know, it's hard when families or individuals are in need and they come and ask for help, but I'm glad that the Joyce Hansen Hall Food Bank is there to help and support those facing food insecurity. The biggest issue, obviously, is what we do, how we help our kids or the kids in this community. And so we're going to continue to fight food insecurity. And like Fernando mentioned, we do have a food drive coming up. It's part of Hunger Action Month in September. It runs from September 1st through the end of September. It's the first time CCS has done their own food drive. We've always partnered with other organizations, but from the support of the community, we're hoping that we can raise about 50,000 pounds that we can distribute through our food pantry. So again, thank you. Really honored to receive this. So thank you.
Thank you.
I am really nervous, and this is not my normal public speaking anyway. So I'm going to read, if that's okay. I do want to just say that I am very humbled and honored by this recognition, especially to have it presented by a friend and colleague that I deeply respect. The work we do at the Weaver County Correctional Facility, along with the Weaver County Community Reentry Coalition, has a significant impact on our community, particularly for those returning to the city of Ogden. The success of these programs is a result of hard work, dedication, and collaboration of a lot of people. In fact, the truth is that there are many others who should be here who deserve to be recognized as well, so I want to take a moment to acknowledge them. I'll start with two amazing gentlemen that are behind me. Our Chief Deputy of Corrections, Philip Reese, believed in me and gave me the opportunity to build this work and has fiercely supported it ever since. His commitment to learning, willingness to change in both mind and practice, and dedication to implementing best practices have made our efforts in corrections a model for others in Utah. David Zikulich has been the Vice Chair of the Reentry Coalition for nearly two years. Though his work has shifted to prevention, David also joined our reentry program during its initial launch to help us develop and establish processes and standards that we utilize today, and oversaw the Reentry Resource Fair until very recently. His support and contributions to the success of this work cannot be overstated. Others who deserve this recognition include Riley Peterson, our reentry program supervisor, who has shown tremendous leadership and dedication in overseeing the day-to-day operations of the Reentry Success Network Program and the Reentry Resource Fair, as well as our entire reentry team. They're really the boots on the ground, and our reentry coordinators and peer support specialists worked tirelessly with a complex, high-risk population, supporting them from incarceration through reentry to the community, and connecting them with the resources they need to give them their best chance at achieving successful outcomes. I must also acknowledge our community partnerships. Weaver Human Services, particularly Wendy Davis Cox, has been a key partner since the beginning, actively participating on the Reentry Coalition and helping develop our reentry support services. USARA with Patrick Cox and Elizabeth Myers has provided invaluable peer support and lived experience insights. Anna Davidson and Nancy Griggs from Ogden Police Department have been essential in supporting our most vulnerable community members. Daniel Lancaster and the Weaver County Public Defenders Group have helped create joint processes between our agencies that better serve our mutual clients, and the Steering Committee of the Reentry Coalition, whose expertise and commitment to our mission drive our work forward. On behalf of all of them, I humbly accept this recognition, and I am incredibly fortunate to work with such amazing people. Thank you all very much.
Chair, may I make a few comments?
Please.
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate you both and your organizations. Randy, I just love CCS's work so much. And my daughter and I actually volunteered a couple weeks ago in the food pantry, and that's an opportunity that's available to anyone. It's really, really, it's a great service project. What they've done with the new building, and even before that, actually, in the old building, they have a pantry where people can go and choose their own items, rather than having them just given items that maybe they wouldn't necessarily use or know how to use, et cetera. So I really love that kind of humane approach to the pantry. And then with Laura, I think I've known her since she started these programs, and it's just been amazing to watch the progress and the success of all those programs. So I congratulate you both.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. The approval of minutes of the work session of July 16th, 2024, Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair White. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate, and I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blair, second by Councilmember Myers. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next on our agenda is, there are three consent items.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda as listed.
Second it.
Right. We have a motion by Councilmember Myers and a second by Councilmember Myers to adopt the, I'm just looking through this, approve and adopt the three consent items. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chuburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
He's not on.
Okay. Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye. And that passes. Are there any members of the Ogden Trails Network that came and are still here? And how about the Christmas Village Committee appointees? All right. And the other one that we voted on was the committee ordinance to sunset, to continue the Ogden Trails Network until April 30th, 2026, and then it will start all over again. So, all right. Next on the agenda is report from the Planning Commission. Barton Briarly, please come in.
Hey, good evening, Vice Chair White and City Councilors. So this is a presentation today on proposed amendments to the mixed-use zoning ordinance. There'll be a companion item that you'll hear as the redevelopment agency later that will propose amendments to the Ogden Bend master plan. So this is where the Ogden Bend area is. It's bound by Wall and Washington and 20th and 18th Street. And this area is zone mixed use. There's a master plan for the area, and some of it has developed pretty much according to plan. I think the most recent project there was the current Phase 2, which you just recently opened up. It's near the Ogden Gateway sign, near the river. And I remember reviewing that project. There's very detailed design standards, and we worked very closely with the developer there to follow those design standards carefully. There are parts of the area that have not developed, and there's some specific impediments to developing those, and there's parts of it that probably never will develop, according to the master plan. So we wanted to take a relook at the plan and the code amendment. It was adopted in 2011, so some of the, we've had some experience about what works and what doesn't work, and need to make some adjustments to the plan. So this first part will deal with the code amendments. So the area is all zoned mixed use, and there's a specific section in the zoning ordinance that says what the standards are and what kind of uses can be done in the mixed-use area. This is the overall process. There's the zoning ordinance text, which you'll be hearing now. There's a zoning map. It's already zoned mixed use, so you won't be considering that today. There's the project master plan, which the redevelopment agency will be considering later tonight, an amendment to that. And then when it comes to a particular project, there's a development agreement required and a site plan review required. So this particular one is just dealing with that first, the changing the mixed-use zoning ordinance text. So some of the changes that we felt were necessary to help development go on, the current zoning ordinance requires that there be, this is a mixed-use area, so the desire is to have a mix of different residential types, some commercial types, single-family, multifamily townhomes, apartments, all those. And the code says that in a block, there needs to be four different building types in order to achieve that mixed use, which, when the plan was adopted, I think there was a thought that the blocks would all be developed by one party, and so being able to do a plan and having four different building types in that block would be fairly simple. But what in fact has happened is these blocks are owned by a variety of property owners who all have different desires of what they want to do with the property, different timeframes. And so trying to get a block developed with four different building types means what your neighbor does affects what you can do, and it just hasn't proved successful. So some of the proposals are, in the project master plan, is to better define what uses go where, and in particularly, there, most of these areas have at least two different building types you can choose from, and then a lot of it is this mixed residential type, which in your project, just the land you own, you have to have two different building types. So this allows any property owner to control what they do on their property without having to look at what their neighbor does and have that affect what they can do. Second change was just on maximum building lengths. The current code requires a maximum building length of 250 feet on the main exterior streets, and then shorter ones on the interior. The planning commission looked at this and wanted to adopt the same sort of standard we have in downtown. In downtown, you have a maximum building length, but we understand that buildings in downtown just get stuck together. So you can have a whole block that's a building face, but because they are separate buildings, there are different architectural styles, there's a rhythm, there's a feel. It feels very comfortable to pedestrians. So the planning commission is recommending adopting that same standard for these exterior streets, actually decrease the maximum length from 250 feet to 200 feet, but then allow the buildings to be connected as long as there's variations in height or design or materials to make it look like separate buildings. Another change that the planning commission looked at was setbacks from the river. I think the planning commission, the people that came to the meetings, all felt that the Ogden River was a very great asset and was very proud of the efforts that Ogden has done to restore the river and to do trails and everything along it. And they felt that there was a, the development was encroaching a little too close to the river, and there weren't really good standards about how close it could be to the river. So the planning commission's recommending a, use the floodway as a setback standard, so you have to be five feet back from the floodway to give a little more room from the river. Also, there's a desire to have trails along both sides of the river in this. And talking with our public services, there's a lot of desire to have a good trail along both sides, not just for the pedestrian and enjoyability, but, you know, they need to get in there and maintain things. I know last year was a pretty scary time. We had really high water, and there's a need to get in there and just manage trees and manage blockage along the river. So there'd be this requirement for the path along the river. There's also a standard for not shading the river, which, if you've got like a master's degree, you can do the calculations and figure it out, but it's really complicated. So we made it simple. It works out the same way. Just put a, it's a one to two slope, and that works out the same. Also, one of the other changes to the code is on the signs. In writing the code, it's very difficult to figure out what the sign standards are in the mixed-use standard, in the mixed-use zone. So we're simplifying that and saying exactly what they are. It'd be the same as in the C1 zone or in residential, for the residential zones. So with those, the planning commission's recommending that you adopt the mixed-use zone text amendments.
Are there any questions? I have one. What are the sign standards for C1? I mean, we have an opportunity to do something different than what is along Harrison Avenue right now, so.
Right, yes. Yeah, I mean, it allows, like, you can have freestanding signs up to, I think it's like 12 feet, and there's this, I think it's like 100 square foot signs, and signs on the building that is a ratio of the size of the building to the size. And so it's less than in the C2 and C3 zones, so it's smaller sizes than that, but still allowing businesses and apartment complexes and student thing that to have signage.
Great, thanks. Go ahead.
Is this a city initiative, or is this a resident-owner-developer initiative to make these mixed-use zone changes?
It's a city initiative to do it. We have been working with various property owners in the area. So most recently, we're looking at doing a land swap with Lotus, and that's really brought the impetus to bring this forward. But it is a city project, and it's not just for that. It's for other projects that will come forward in the area.
And the feedback that you're getting from the property owners, what has that been?
It's been positive. You know, concerns about, you know, how it's going to affect me, and we've worked with property owners on, you know, exactly that. It is complicated because of the pattern of ownership. It's going to require a lot of cooperation between property owners. Hey, can, will you sell me this part, and I'll sell you that part? And so it, and who builds this road that goes through? So there's a lot of detailed questions that we've talked to, but the property owners that we've talked to have been supportive.
And just one last item, and that is, I really like the way that you're looking out for the river and keeping that more of an open space than it is on some other parts of the river. So just kudos to planning. Great job. I think that's an important asset that we just need to continue to value and look out for. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All right, this is a, we're going, opportunity to receive public input if there's anybody that would like to talk specifically about this Ogden Bend mixed-use zone.
My name's Peter Barrera. I live at 2578 Jaclyn Drive. I want to take the opportunity to thank you all for everything that you do, because I understand how stressful these positions can be, and the decisions that you have to make are going to affect us not only today, but going forward. I have six parcels that are right across the street on 18th Street that look over the river, and these properties, we're looking to also develop them in the future. I brought that before the Planning and Zoning Commission at the last discussion. One of the things that I'm not too understanding about is the issue with changing the verbiage in the mixed use. As you know, I've been here since 2006, and we've had quite a bit of work done just to acquire those properties. They were all And I'm thinking that one of the things I read about in the, changing in the text is, has to do with single-family homes. And I think that that might be not, in my opinion, probably a waste of opportunity, as the discussions going around the country right now with affordable homes, part of it doesn't have to be small homes, it could also be condominiums. Also, that area lends itself well to have, for, for folks that are elderly, that they need places to, to roam around that beautiful river area as well. So, I'd like for you to, to consider exactly what the, what is going to actually be in offered there, because it does offer, right now, a great opportunity for some thriving downtown area. And anyway, just thought I'd, again, thank you all for, for taking the time out.
Great. Anyone else? Bart, is there anyone else? All right. Barton, if you could come back, back up and just address it. So it sounds to me as though he's addressing something that's across, that we're not proposing tonight, but have you looked at expanding the mixed-use area to the other side?
Yes, I did meet with Mr. Barrera. We talked several times about it. Yeah, he owns property that's just on the north side of 18th Street, and this is potential expansion of the mixed-use area. So we've talked about what that might be, and he's expressed some interest in expanding it and doing some sort of mixed use on that side of the road. I think there's a good potential for that, and I think after discussion, it would be up to him to come and propose that expansion, and propose a project master plan, go through the process. On single-family homes, part of the, this mixed-use area, we wanted to have a variety of housing types, so, and we've got some, some of the best townhomes in the area, in my opinion, there. We've got some good multifamily there, we have some commercial. We haven't been successful in getting the single-family in that area, so the, the project master plan, which you'll hear later, does propose some specific areas for single-family to get that mix of areas. And I'll say, citywide, we're doing good with apartments, we're doing pretty good with townhomes, we are doing really bad in getting new single-family homes in Ogden.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question about that, too. You go ahead first.
So, the, the mixed-use zone has been kind of slow to take a hold. And, yeah, I, I think, I think that the general concept of the mixed-use zone is, is wonderful, it's perfect for, for, for our city, and, and there's certainly a need for it, probably in other places as well, but developers have not ever warmed up to it at all. Do you think these changes are, are enough to, to get it to, to be accepted better and, and used better, and developed as, as it's designed to do?
I think this is one piece of the solution. The, one of the big things that's hampered development of this area is the checkerboard pattern of ownership. If there was one block that was owned by one developer, I think it would just take off, but that's not the case, you got.
I would agree with you, but, but see, that, that only applies here. I mean, there are other places that, that it could just drop in and, and work, I think.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I mean, the current market, developers will tell you, commercial is struggling, and so there's some reluctance to build new commercial space, especially if it's not really prime commercial. Apartments are booming, you know, developers can build apartments all day long, townhomes are doing good, the single-family, it's just a matter of, it's, it's just more economical to build an apartment than a bunch of single-family homes right now. So we are fighting against some of those market trends, and the larger an area you have, that you're developing all at once, the better you are to respond to those market trends. There might be some parts of your project that are more profitable, some parts that are less, and all together. It's the small lots where I've got, you know, one lot, and you're asking me to do a, a ground floor retail and upper floor, you know, 15-unit apartments, that developers are not finding that financially feasible right now.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, I'm, when you were saying that it's something that we would consider is his idea of the proposal, but he would have to go through the process of petitioning for that? So I'm curious why we wouldn't consider his proposal as part of this, so he doesn't have to go through that expense and work.
Yeah, we actually, I, I think we have different visions of what that would be. I think we actually, the, the planning commission actually entertained the idea of making that his property's more of a, a small cottage lot area. He has more of a vision of a live-work, commercial component. And so ultimately, we just said, well, if that's what you want to propose, then, then you propose it. If it was, if it was just the more cottage lot, we were ready to propose that as an amendment, but.
So that's what's already zoned for?
It's actually zoned for single-family.
Awesome. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Creative differences, I would say.
Any other questions? All right. If, if there are no more questions, or no more public input?
Vice Chair White, I would make a motion then, that we adopt ordinance 2024-25, amending the municipal code for mixed-use zone projects.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Blair, to adopt the proposed ordinance 2024-25. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye, that passes. I would suggest that you continue to talk to the parties across the street, it'd be great.
I keep working on this zone, make it, make it all it can be.
Yeah, and I heard a, a use of words of, that just, integrated, I thought was a very integrated use, not mixed use. Anyway, that was, um, next up is reports from administration. The proposed firefighter retirement revisions. And I have Not Heather coming up.
Heather has way more hair than I do. But, yeah, I told her I would speak on, on her behalf today, so, Vice Chair White, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on the proposed changes to the firefighter retirement system. As you're well aware, we do many inter-facility transfers, taking patients from our local hospitals to hospitals in Salt Lake, Provo, Idaho, we've been to Las Vegas, we've been to Washington State, to get them the appropriate care they need, or to return them to their loved ones. In July 1st of 2023, House Bill 183 passed, and it was, allows city entities like our fire department to put EMTs into the retirement system, into the firefighter retirement system. So we went down that path, we had a part-time inter-facility transfer ambulance, staffed with just EMTs, emergency medical technicians. The struggles of having two part-timers on the ambulance, having them work weird hours, just didn't work. So this year in the budget, we went through four full-time positions to staff those, that transfer ambulance. It was approved, and now we have to work on the resolution to the state of Utah to get those EMTs approved into the Utah retirement system. To do that, resolution has to be adopted by the governing body, which is yourselves. The job descriptions of the new positions need to be covered in the firefighter system with sufficient details to determine qualifications, which we've done, and then an updated declaration of regularly scheduled hours, documents averaging the base hours for these new positions has to be done, and we've done that as well. They are classified as emergency medical technicians, so they don't work the same schedule that firefighters work, they'll be based on a 40-hour work week. The Federal Labor Standards Act does not allow us to put them into an actual firefighter schedule, so they'll be working a 40-hour week and not a 56-hour week, but we need that resolution to be able to push this through the Utah retirement system, and that's why we're here today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Blair? All right. No?
Thank you.
Your motion?
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm chaired, to adopt proposed resolution 2024-8.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Chaburka, and second by Councilmember Myers, to adopt a proposed resolution 2024-8. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye. That passes. I just want to thank the fire department for thinking outside the box again. I think, a lot of times, we, we get into this mindset that it can only be this way, and so thank you very much.
Vice Chair, if I might make a little comment, too, just anecdotally, I, I know closely a couple of other firefighters that don't work for Ogden, and, and I asked them both, I says, okay, well, how come you don't work for Ogden? And they says, well, because you guys work too hard, and, and they cited this transportation thing as the issue that, that, that kept them from warming up to Ogden, and, and I, and then the budget was proposed, and this happened, and you guys are, you guys are on it. I, I think you're, you're on to something here. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good thing for, for our department and, and our city. Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, moving on in our agenda, we have public comments. This is an opportunity to address the city council with any concerns or ideas on any topic. You have three minutes, please come up and state your name. We will have a, an RDA meeting after this meeting, but there will be no public comment, so if you have comments, now is your time to come up.
My name is Blaine Ritchie, I live at 1480 Country Hills Drive. Last time I was here was on the 15th of June, presenting a petition to close Taylor Avenue at Village Drive on the south side of Weber State. I have noticed that the city has recently installed radar speed signs on both sides of the road. It is my hope that this is just a short-term effort to calm the traffic until a gate can be installed. It is my opinion that the radar sign may help in the short term, but may become ineffective over time. In general studies have concluded that once people know they're being monitored, they modify their behavior, but then regress to their old ways after a time. This has been the opinion of Ogden City traffic engineers when these signs have been requested in the city. For some, it does alert them to pay attention, but I'm skeptical with the college-age demographic that is running late to class. I think the key point is that every road on the north side of campus has been closed to through, to, to, to through traffic. In the not-too-distant past, Custer was closed. About the same time, they closed the entrances to the institute parking lot from the north side, so that you couldn't get through to the campus that way either. Effectively, closing Iowa Avenue, Tyler Avenue, and 37th Street. There was an article in the paper at that time, justifying the closure, stating that the people in that neighborhood had suffered enough, we have endured longer than they. Now Birch has recently been closed, not to mention that Mount Ogden Drive and Taylor Avenue on the north side of campus do not go through. In a campus master planning meeting held years ago, someone asked Mer Calverson, who's the VP of Facilities Planning, when they were going to close Birch. At that time, he said that it had been studied, but nothing was currently in the works. He did, however, mention that they were considering closing the access to Dixon Drive from behind Burger King and the credit union. Currently, that option takes some of the load off of Taylor. If that gets closed, Taylor would be the only access to the campus from the south neighborhood. There are only six residential buildings that have directly benefited from the closure of Birch, while the closure of Taylor would directly benefit 34 residences. The city set the precedent of street closures in the past, and most recently with the closure of Birch. This wouldn't even be a talking point if everyone gets to share in the pain of university traffic, but that is not the case. While realizing that Weber State is a huge entity, the concerns of the citizens of Ogden should not be dismissed. It's my guess that the university would like to keep Taylor open for connecting the north campus with the D Event Center, but if they really can't go via Skyline or Harrison with their vehicles, they can always use the BRT road that was just put in. There's been talk about doing a traffic study, but in my opinion, it doesn't matter if the traffic volume goes up or down, the residents on Birch had traffic passing through the neighborhood, and now they have none. I don't see why that can't be the same for Taylor.
Thank you.
All right, I got some questions on part of the RDA, Scott Jensen, 18th Street. When planning was up here, it sounded a little confusing, kind of, certain, certain businesses weren't to be developed, certain ones were. Part of your developers, kind of got really confusing. Just want to kind of bring that to light on what's happening, because I do own a piece on 18th Street. We're kind of being hassled by code enforcement, I want to bring that to attention, too. It seems like they're overstepping their boundaries a little bit, and instead of working with a landowner, they kind of just more or less of, oh, well, you're in violation of this, it's like, okay, what's this? Oh, well, it's code this, okay, what's code that? Oh, well, you, you need to figure it out. It's like, this has been happening for 20 years now, that we've been having issues like this. Ever since the RDA in our area happened, that's when we started having issues. And I've been there over 40 years. So, I don't know, it just, it seems like it's turned into a headache, instead of working with the people in the city, they seem to be more forceful, and I'd like that to be kind of addressed. It just, I don't know, we've been, ever since this RDA, I mean, a lot of the families, family homes and stuff, kind of been torn down, they brought in kind of a forceful developer out of California, he's been in trouble with California quite a few times, and his land has not been, nothing's been done on his land that he owns right now, and that was in phase one, and he's even delinquent on all of his taxes, on all of his parcels, you know, so why are we losing funding from somebody from California? And I know that's done through the county, but still, it just, you know, these bigger people seem to get away with more stuff than an actual resident of Ogden City. So, I'd like better communication, and when, when we come to these meetings, we're like, oh yeah, we've talked to landowners, it's like, okay, where am I missing it on finding this information, because I have not been contacted? And the little flyer we got this time was just some information to get together on RDA, and the room number was down one flight, doors locked, we were kind of confused again. So we're here, we got the agenda, I'm assuming this is part of what that flyer we got from the city? So, that's kind of all I have at the moment, we'll have to see kind of what comes up in this next agenda on the RDA.
All right.
Thanks.
I didn't think we got his name, I didn't hear your name, I'm so sorry.
Scott Jensen.
Scott Jensen, I'm sorry.
No, it's all good.
Obviously, I missed it, so sorry.
So, okay, thanks.
We'll try to address some of this stuff, as, we'll get everybody's comments, and then we'll try to address some of these.
Hi, Chris Barrigan, 4253 Taylor Avenue. I'm, I'm really here because Blaine Ritchie pulled me out of hiding with regards to political things, and I, and I appreciate him for doing it, and I think this is an issue that, like, I mean, it's as bipartisan as it gets, because I know that, you know, Blaine and Tim behind him and I see totally differently politically, but the reason why I'm here is because of the efforts that Blaine has made in this last little bit. Blaine has, has done his due diligence, he's brought up an issue that he feels passionate about.
We'll try to address some of this stuff as, we'll get everybody's comments, and then we'll try to address some of these.
Hi, Chris Barrigan, 4253 Taylor Avenue. I'm really here because Blaine Ritchie pulled me out of hiding with regards to political things, and I appreciate him for doing it. And I think this is an issue that, like, I mean, it's as bipartisan as it gets, because I know that, you know, Blaine and Tim behind him and I see totally differently politically. But the reason why I'm here is because of the efforts that Blaine has made in this last little bit. Blaine has done his due diligence. He's brought up an issue that he feels passionate about, and he's implored his fellow neighbors to be aware of what's going on. And frankly, for me, I'm the kind of person that can take a good bit of discomfort when it comes to what's going on around me. Now, we live up on Taylor. It's certainly not the worst place to live, and I'm sure there's a lot more pressing issues that we have within this city. But what he's illustrated in his, like, his research, in his, like, thoughtfulness and going through it, is that, yeah, we've become the holding-on-to-the-hot-potato when the music is stopped with regards to Weber State University and just the influx of traffic that happens on Taylor. It's something that, since I've lived on that street, I've been aware of. I've watched my children grow up on that street with just a deluge of students and faculty and others using that street as a go-through, a lot of times on their phones, not paying attention to my kids or pets or anybody else that's there. And it continues to be a problem and probably has escalated as the result of other streets closing. So he was very enthusiastic and optimistic, I think, up until just a recent conversation with Mara that happened on a sidebar right now, that may not, like, keep his optimism up. And I hope that's not the case. I hope that the council, I hope that the administration, I hope that everybody will listen to what he's tried to do here and say, look, we can solve this problem with a gate, and we can ask Weber State to be respectful of our city in regards to that. I echo what he said with regards to, you know, putting up radars. If anything, a lot of times, it ends up being a challenge more than it ends up being a warning for some people on streets. And I know that that's just the case. I think that Weber State obviously provides a benefit to this community. I think at the same time, too, Weber State is very overreaching in what they think that they can have within the city of Ogden, so much so that they use that street for graduations, for football games. They plant flags in my lawn without even my consent, which I'm fine with. I'll root for the Wildcats. But I think at this point, Blaine has put forth a solid proposal, and I hope that you guys will take a good bit of time looking at it. So thank you.
Chris.
My name's Tim Nostoriak. I live at 4233 Taylor Avenue. Lived there for, gosh, 35 years. Great neighborhood. Seen the influx of traffic over the years come through Taylor Avenue. In fact, recently, enrollment for Weber State's been up 22% at the end of 2023. And so you combine that with the influx of traffic with all the other equipment from Weber State, it becomes an issue. One of the greatest desires is to keep our residential safe, our children safe, as well as the integrity of our residential property. I think that's been a big concern, as well as the safety of our children. With the closure of all the side streets on the north of Weber State, they have no other place to go through but Taylor Avenue plus the access behind Burger King and the credit union there. And so if they close those accesses off, you'll have no other recourse but all the other traffic coming through Taylor Avenue as well. And so there's great concern there. Appreciate the signs, the radar signs being put up. There's one sign that's a little bit too low with the traffic or the parking impeding the speeding that goes on or the speed monitoring. Once again, we find that 10% to 20% at most deters the traffic from speeding. Those are statistics that are out there. So would like to say also that Weber State is a great entity within our community. We embrace it. We would like the gate there and have Weber State control that and open it up to all events. We want to embrace that, but we also want to maintain the integrity of our street as well as the safety of our families. And so we also embrace the fact that you could change that access road, that the bus comes along the road and make that open to all state vehicles. There's remedies that could be put into place. I don't think the gate would be that expensive of an issue, but it would also benefit both Weber State as well as our residents. So with them being in control of the key and so on to the gate. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
We're just actually talking about that, because I was at home, and I clicked on the Zoom link, and it said invalid meeting ID. So.
Okay.
So it's working. What does that mean? So you're going to take online then?
Yeah.
All right. There's an S. Richards online. Hi there.
I'm on.
Yep.
My name is Stuart Richards. I live at 4280 Taylor Avenue. I've lived in my home 43 years. In all the years that I've lived there, we've had a speed limited sign, excuse me, 25 miles an hour. With respect to the new radar electric signs down there, I don't think that, in my view, that that is going to slow the traffic down at all. Many times, as I've come up, what they call the nickname of the Weber 500, on the second house from the corner on the east side, as you turn north, excuse me, towards football stadium, and many times, I've been, I'm going to say it like it is, many times, people lay on the horn and give me the high sign as I'm trying to turn into my driveway, and they've been tailgating me all the way up from Harrison. The other issue is, I think that if you look at the radar signs, speed signs they have between Washington Boulevard and Harrison, that doesn't seem to slow the traffic down at all. All you've got to do is go the posted speed limit sign, and people are flying past you all the time. So my real concern is the, how do you slow the traffic down and the congestion? And I'm in complete favor of putting the gate down there on the north end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. We also have a hand up, caller 267, ending in 267. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, this is Linda Sanchez. I am very grateful that you guys are able to let me be where I need to be, but still be a part of the community and listen, so I appreciate that. I just, I couldn't feel like sometimes our country needs reminders. And that flag that we had flying, it really, it really gave me some hope and peace, and I feel like it brought many different people together. And what I want to say is more of a suggestion than anything, and you can take it for what you would like, but I feel like when we have council meetings, I feel like we've forgotten sometimes our founding fathers, and sometimes, sometimes the Constitution is, I feel like, being diluted. Or, you know, some people even question, should it still be relevant or whatever? And I feel like the younger generation doesn't know a lot of the things that has gone on before, and I'm sure people that are older than I am think the same thing about me. And I was thinking about this the other day, and in council meetings, what if we just did some, at least just a little tidbit of either a constitutional minute that you're seeing in the community, or maybe like a founding, a forefather founding quote to help people think? And I don't know. I just, I just thought that maybe something to help everyone to come together, no matter who you are. We are all wanting freedom, no matter who we are or what we are. Anyway, that's just a thought, and I'll yield back.
Teresa is online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. This is Teresa Bramwell. I wanted to make a comment about the RDA that was discussed in this meeting on 20th Street on the River. I wasn't involved in anything in Ogden City when this land, when the taking of the land from the original homeowners to create this large swath of land that's owned by this developer happened, which was prior to 2014, I was not involved or coming to any city council meetings in Ogden, so I attempted to do some research on how this came about and who owned it and what their plans are, because I did some research on the land and found that the land has been sitting vacant in its current state since 2014 with absolutely no action happening on it. So then I wanted to know who owned it and why they're just sitting on this land when homeowners and residents of Ogden were kicked out of their homes in order to create this vacant land. So I went to Provo City, where the tax assessments for this land are being sent, and it took me to the Zion Bank Building on University Avenue in Provo, to a vacant office building with no furniture in it and no sign on the door. So that was very confusing to me, that somebody owns this massive amount of land that was compiled together by Ogden City and then sold to this developer, whoever this entity is, I have no idea who it is, for a very low amount of money in 2014, and then it has just sat there for 10 years. So I still don't have the answers to that. I will find the answers to that, though, because I'll find this person. They're not in Provo in the Zion Bank Building, though, I know that. And I can echo the sentiments of the people across the street on 18th Street that are very frustrated with being harassed by the code enforcement department after having been landowners and taxpayers in Ogden City for decades. So I can echo their sentiments, and I feel their pain. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
We have another hand online. It says Chris Barrigan, remote. Chris, you've already, if it's not, you've already talked once. Are you just listening in? Or is it someone else?
It's actually Brooke. Brooke Barrigan.
All right, Brooke, I just want to make sure. Hi, Brooke.
Brooke Barrigan, 4253 Taylor Avenue. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my neighbors, and it sounds like we were shot down before this meeting, which is really discouraging. And so I guess my, I would say, just make two important points. One be, well, actually, three. One being, the amount of times that we've, like Stuart said, been honked at pulling into our driveways, or, you know, had close calls happen because students are driving way too fast on that street, is just, it's outrageous. And my daughter just reminded me that at one point, a student was on his phone, looking at his phone, and I'm driving, I'm leaving the neighborhood, and he hit my car. So I actually had a car accident because of this access to Weber State. And then the other crucial point is that we have not one, not two, but several children, well, children, lots of children on Taylor Avenue, but several with disabilities. And so if Ogden City is shooting us down preemptively, you know, you're really not caring for these kids, and one of those is in our home. And so then my third point is really a question, and that is, then what is the plan to care for these residences? If you're already shooting us down, then what is the plan to care for us, for Taylor Avenue, as we've cared for the other residential entrances to Weber State? And that's all I have.
All right, I don't see any other hands online. Anyone else in the chambers?
Emily Beely. Unfortunately, I know there are at least two other people trying to access Zoom, but they're being unsuccessful. I just sent them encouragement to go to zoom.com and enter the meeting ID, so maybe that will work. But what I wanted to, right when I wanted to make a comment, the last time you asked, is there any comment about the RDA discussion? That was when I realized I was on Facebook and I couldn't raise my hand, and then I started trying to get on Zoom, and that's when it didn't work, and so that's why I'm here. So I just wanted to say how pleased I was at the presentation, which gave a lot of requests for elimination of some of the restrictions on the use of the land. You know, with like the length of the building or, you know, just different things. I can't remember at all, but that is very exciting to me, and that is what I hope is going to be the trend as the code is revamped and the zoning is revamped, that property owners will be given more freedom in what they do with their land, their homes. Because, you know, when, like, things get, things deteriorate over time and they need to be improved upon, if somebody is handy and they want to do that work themselves, and then the city says, well, you may want to do a project that you could do, you know, a little DIY for maybe less than $1,000, but actually, you need to hire an engineer or somebody who's going to make an official plan, you know, the design and everything, that's going to cost you $3,000. You know, so why would you have to pay $3,000 to get plans to do a $1,000 project? And that is the kind of thing that I know exists in the code, and so I'm just optimistic that in the future, there will be fewer restrictions and mandates on what property owners can do with their land. Thank you. I guess I'm going to yield back my 35 seconds.
All right, anyone else in the chamber? Just making sure there's no one. Just making sure there's no one else online, just real quick. All right. Seeing no other comments, we will move on to comments from the mayor. Oh wait, let's try that again. Let's address all the things that we just talked about. I'm so sorry. See, I'm a little rusty at that.
I think they're in the same, it's the same. Thanks.
We've got kind of two issues, maybe three. Um, if we could start with maybe, uh, Taylor Avenue and then, um, so we did hear some, um, some, some things that are going on in Taylor Avenue, obviously the, the flashing signs are up. It sounds like maybe the, uh, officers are going to be out more. They're doing, um, some speed work and stuff out there, but, um, Mayor or Mara, could you address some of those issues?
Thank you. Before we get to Taylor Avenue, I just wanted to mention to Scott Jensen, I was having a hard time tracking the specifics on your concerns, but we do have staff here that if you want to talk with them, they might be able to help get you some clarity. Didn't want to leave you hanging.
Yeah, I, I don't either. There are a couple of questions around the RDA. I think it sounds like he received a flyer that maybe the room number wasn't correct or something. So there might be some other, uh, issues around that.
Yeah.
Probably one of our flyers that go out.
Yeah, we'll need some follow-up. Maybe if you could talk to one of these guys. I've got our director of economic development, deputy director and our city planner. Between those three, I'm sure we can figure out what that project was and the notice and what the issues are. Um, so Taylor Avenue, uh, I don't know, there, no one has been shot down preemptively, period, at all. We're trying, we're doing everything we can to be helpful. If the only thing that's going to work is the gate, then we're probably going to have a hard time together. But I'm trying, I want to be really focused not on shutting down traffic, period, no traffic allowed. We're trying to create a safe environment. That's, that's been my paradigm and approach. The, the signs are temporary placed. Um, Tim, I think that was you that mentioned that there were, one was low and one was high. They're temporarily placed. Yep. So we're working on permanent placement of those signs. I'm sure the location hopefully will be a little bit better. But, um, we were trying to get them out there quickly so that you guys could know that we're taking action. It's not going to be all action all at once because things are arriving kind of in, uh, you know, as they arrive, just through shipment and backlogs on orders and so on. But we're really well-prepared for the start of school. So we've been talking really carefully or closely with Weaver State and there's going to be an enormous surge of enforcement for that opening day and beyond. So just be heads up for that. Um, there's going to be a heavy presence and there's going to be a lot of enforcement and the, the idea being we're going to try and change behavior and we're going to make sure that people know, um, when they go through, if they're going to go through that area, you better go through there safely or you're going to end up having some consequences. And we'll keep up that effort to make sure that we change behavior and if we need to keep it up for a long time, that's what we're going to have to do. Um, I know we've got more flashing beacons coming for crosswalks and so on. Um, so there's, there's more work coming. We've been real communicative with the council on the efforts. It was our hope that we could be communicative with Mr. Ritchie. It wasn't an effort to shoot anybody down. We're trying to do everything we can, um, short of shutting down the road if that's going to create a bunch of different issues is my understanding. Um, so that's it. Anyway, that's our approach. We're putting a ton of effort and resources into it. I hope that you guys recognize the effort we're putting into. We absolutely honor and understand the issues and concerns you guys have been bringing for a long, long time. So we're trying to match your level of concern, but we're trying to take it stepwise to get to a point of a safe environment for kids and families and everybody in that area. Um, Linda, I echo your, and agree with your comments about the flag. Uh, it has been, it's been hard in this country lately with the divisiveness. It certainly is ramping up with the elections. But if there's one thing that we all ought to unify around is that flag. And I certainly felt that way when I drove underneath it and, and saw it downtown as well. So thanks for noticing that. Um, Emily, I'll need specifics on that code citation or the area that you're referencing and we can look at that. Um, I think that, I think that hits it, hits everything.
Yeah, I just want to also, um, uh, Councilmember Hare, every year, um, make sure that we recognize Constitution Day. I'm sure it will be no different this year, so.
A little different. Well, it'll be a little different. Last year was kind of special.
Yeah, good point. But, uh, Councilmember Hare, uh, I, I just wanted to also follow up with, with Linda's comment as well. Um, and then I also wanted to, uh, address, um, Emily, there's a lot of state and national building codes that we also have to follow. So, um, wanted to throw that out there as well. We can't just make our own, have our own codes as, so. I'm just, I'm just making comment. Um, so with that, uh, Any other, uh, so Mr. Jensen, I, the, all of those gentlemen that he talked about are all over in this area. So don't leave before you talk to them. I know there's a pillar, there's two pillars in between. Comments from the mayor, any further comments? Comments from the council members?
I'll just chime in real fast on the Taylor Avenue. Um, last week, I think it was last week, we talked with Mara. Mara came up and said, you know, we're working on some things. We've got some things coming. Um, we'd want to get together and try to meet with residents, um, whether that's a cottage meeting or in my home or in Tim's backyard, whatever that be. Um, but yeah, so I do appreciate the administration, um, addressing the concerns and trying to work to solve them. Um, I understand it's not an easy thing, but I do appreciate you guys, um, getting on it quickly and, and Justin too. Justin, I had a long conversation with Justin about, um, kind of some plans up there. So, so yeah, um, there are wheels in motion. There's things that are happening. I'm, I'm very excited about the patrolling that will take place with the new, with school starting and I think we can make some, some improvements there. And then, um, as Mara mentioned last week, there are other maybe opportunities or other possibilities that we can explore also. So I think, um, um, yeah, I, I agree. I think there are things we can do and, and I'm just going to take some dialogue and some time together. So I appreciate my neighbors all coming down again. Um, but yeah, that was all.
So I, I want to also say that, um, Councilmember Graff is not here, but he called as I was walking from here to here to make sure that he, that you knew that he had heard you about the noise as well on Taylor Street. So I, I wanted to, uh, let you know that he is listening to you even though he's not here. He wanted to make sure that you knew that. And then my, my comment really quickly, I was able to look at, uh, go through the, uh, model home the other day of the, on 515 24th Street and it was just, it's, it's a really neat project, um, for sale products, which thank you for bringing to our city. I know those have been in the works for a while, but, um, just really beautiful product. So, um, it was fun. Anything else?
Motion, George.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Blair. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to our next meeting.
I still have one.
I'm going to quit giving you cookies with sugar. No, no. Good evening and welcome to the special redevelopment agency meeting of August 20th, 2024. Um, oh, I'm going to get this wrong.
Board member.
Uh, I'm, uh, Board Member Graff and Chair Ritchie, um, asked if they could be excused from this evening's meeting and we said yes. How'd I do that? Um, I am not going to get that. Um, with that, we'll go on to the approval of minutes. A regular meeting of June 11th, 2024, Board Member Chaburka.
Yes, so sorry. Um, yes Chair, I have read those minutes and they are accurate to my recollection.
And the regular meeting of June 18th, 2024, Board Member Blair.
Yes, thank you Vice Chair White. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate and I would make a motion that we approve the minutes listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Blair, second by Board Member Myers. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next on our agenda is a report from the administration.
So good evening again. So this is the second part of the proposal that we brought before you on the Ogden Bend Master Plan. This would be a change to the project master plan itself. So as we discussed, this is the Ogden Bend area. And the area is zoned mixed use. And we went through the process before and this particular item would be an amendment to the project master plan itself, which is, needs to be approved by the redevelopment agency. So in encouraging redevelopment of this area and updating some of the plans, there were some issues that we had, uh, that were very difficult to implement. Um, so one of the things is the current concept plan that was developed in, uh, 2011, it has, the gray areas are conceptual, so just showing what could be there, but isn't required to be those building types. But the ones that are, you see in colors are required to be that building type in that location. Uh, the issue was the, since the area isn't all vacant all owned by one person, um, it's not going to be developed exactly like is shown. And so when we worked with the people and said, okay, I've, they're showing this building that has to be in this location, except for I own the front, somebody else owns the back, I can't build it. I can't build the buildings that you're showing on this. And so requiring those specific building types at those specific locations just became an impracticality. So the proposal instead, uh, you know, this shows the ownership that, uh, is really checkerboard pattern in the area of ownership. And so some of the changes would be to try to facilitate some, some consolidation of properties. It's going to take various property owners cooperating with each other, selling, changing, swapping properties in the area. So one of the swaps that are exchanges that's being contemplated is Lotus Company owns property along Lincoln Avenue. Ogden City owns property that's along, uh, 18th and Wall. So it's contemplated a possible exchange of those properties. But in order to do that, um, the property on 18th and Wall is planned for a park. And so one of the changes would be to relocate that planned park. So this would allow Lotus to actually develop their proper, the property that they would obtain there and, uh, and still have a park, still roughly the same area of park in the area. And I know we talked about this with the planning commission and, uh, they're actually quite excited about this change. Just felt that having a larger, a little more rectangular central park that's not right on Wall Avenue would actually be, uh, a real benefit for the area. Um, this, the part of the park that's already built is very well-used. I was just amazed going by there, just seeing how many people are using it. And the planning commission felt that, um, having that expanded and more usable area here would be really preferable to the park on 18th and Wall. So, so I started talking about the fixed building types. So one of the changes would be to have it, there's still a concept plan, but it doesn't include any of these fixed building types. Rather it has these building areas as I discussed before, so that in that area you can do, um, the building types that are shown there, but it doesn't have to be in that exact configuration. So there's a little, quite a bit more flexibility on how the areas to develop that follows property lines. As I mentioned, uh, one of the things we haven't really attracted in there is single family dwellings. Uh, we've done, we've got great townhomes, great apartments, commercial, but really no single family. So, uh, one of the proposals would be to, uh, plan for a centralized, small lot cottage, single family detached, uh, sort of development in the middle of the area. Some other adjustments on the plan, there's some circulation things like on the bottom there, there was a little, uh, court access that I'm sure any traffic engineer looked at that, just, uh, cringes looking at it. So, uh, and that wasn't, hasn't been built. And so just adjusting the plan for that and doing some other relocations of facilities. Also making sure there's a really robust pedestrian circulation plan in the area. So this has been updated. That's one of the real benefits of this mixed use area is, uh, great places to walk along the river, uh, from downtown to the river and, uh, within the park. So the planning commission's considered this and recommends adopting the project master plan amendment.
Great. Are there any questions? I have one quick question. So as we do all of this, um, land swapping, as you just called it, um, we, we also have, um, a parkway or an area sidewalk that goes through there. Is that, will that also still be available for the public use?
Along the river?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Even though it goes through now somebody else's property? Or is that, will that continue to be right away?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's, the plan is to have, uh, there's the walkway along the south side now and that, the plan would be to maintain that. And if there's any land swap, that'd be part of the consideration. Also on the north side, there'd be a new walkway along that. And so providing that.
Just making sure that there's public access.
Yes. So in one case, the city council thinks the other is the redevelopment agency. So as part of that, those deals, then yes, that, that would be part of the, the transaction to make sure we maintain that access.
And Barton, how does the plan work on Wall Avenue where they're going to, Lotus potentially be building apartments there? And then the potential ordinance of limiting apartments along Wall Avenue in certain parts of town? That, how's that going to work out? That, I, I see the proposal and it just makes me wonder a little bit. It's...
Yeah, actually, oh, quite a bit of thought in there. Um, the proposed amendment would apply north of here. It wouldn't apply on this property because this would be zoned mixed use. The proposal... The proposed ordinance would apply in commercial C2, C3 zones. And I know the planning commission's had a lot of thought about this, about where apartments are appropriate. And, you know, we use this as an example of a great place to have it because you've got trails, you've got shopping nearby, you've got a park, you've got really safe places to walk outside of the streets, whereas you go north on Wall, you lose all of that. There isn't parks, there isn't trails, there aren't, you know, safe places to play and gather, so. So, I know the planning commission was excited about having apartments in this area, and they'll come forward to you, they've recommended to not allow them in those more highway corridors that are not, that don't have those amenities.
The second question is, conceptually, you've got a lot of those walking trails, and that's a beautiful part of this. But the development of those walking trails, that relies primarily on the developer to put those in?
Yes, yes.
And is it required to put those in, or is it suggested?
It's, every site plan that comes in is required to comply with the project master plan, so yes, they would be required as part of their project to accommodate those pathways through there.
And where we have so many, I think your term was checkerboard, kind of a situation of ownership in those areas, do they buy into this as they develop the property, or does it start to develop as, you know, the timing on this, I just don't see it coming together at one time for the walkways?
It will not come together at one time. I can guarantee you that. It will be incremental over time. There are parts of this plan that won't be developed until after I'm passed on, I'm sure. So, there will be places where you've developed the pathway right up to the fence, and it stops there, and it may stop there for 20, 30, 40 years. But others, you know, will go through and will be incrementally developed.
But in other words, then, it's required that they develop the pathway when they develop their property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
One other quick question. In this area, have we, are we getting rid of parking minimums in this, or have we thought about that?
We, the plan has not gotten rid of parking minimums.
Maxims, maybe?
Yes.
I don't know if that's wrong.
There are, there's still requirements for parking for residential uses. There are, there's a lot more flexibility. It's actually parking maximums for commercial, so. But there still is a requirement for parking for residential. We didn't propose that change in the code.
I do have one last question. The area that is undeveloped behind, is that Mountain America Credit Union, just to the west?
Mm-hmm.
That new development there that is, appears primarily undeveloped, is there a developer that's wanting to go through to develop that property now? Or is this-
Not at this point. This, I think you're- I think this is the credit union, this is the current, and then there's a big chunk of property here. City owns like a little sliver in it, and the rest is a private developer. And as far as we know, they don't have any immediate plans to develop it.
Very good.
All right, any other questions? All right. With that, we have the opportunity to receive public input just on this parcel, or this plan, I'm sorry, the Ogden Bend Master Plan. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that? I see Jared's over there with Mr. Jensen, but-
Emily Beely. I was curious as well, when you talked about, or he mentioned that there has been an effort to, or discussion at least, that we want to make an effort to have more single-family homes. And then he said in this particular one, there was a little bit of that. And I just wondered if we have reached the apartment demand? Or is it that Lotus doesn't want to make single-family homes? Or how come there's not more of that, I guess is my thought? Because it seemed like he was saying a little bit, you know, desiring that it was different. You know, we have a lot of apartments, a lot of condos, and a few single-family homes. So, I just wondered, if that's what we want, why don't we have more of it? Thanks, Emily.
Hi. My name's Clint Stanger. I live on 1991 Birch Cove Street in the Riverbend Townhome area. There was one slide I would like to pay a little more attention to, and that is where the apartments were placed. I don't know where Emily went. Where the apartments were placed kind of around the park. I know being in a park, it's not, I don't think it would be ideal to look at a tall apartment building, which we sort of experienced behind the old Slackwater. You know, they built the, the buildings right up against the river. And it's not really a, that's not great for enhancing the outdoor experience, I guess. So, I would be interested to maybe pay a little closer attention to the buildings or structures that are surrounding the projected park. And then I would also like to understand, you know, if the parks were anticipated, why haven't they been developed yet? If that is Ogden City land, you know, and the, this project has been ongoing since 2011, why haven't, why hasn't Ogden developed the parks yet? So, thank you.
All right. There's a hand online, Peter Beely.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I think I missed the general public comment, but on your slides relative to this matter, I noticed that their Ogden City owns property. And I know that Ogden City owns a golf course and probably this baseball stadium and other assets that really compete with private enterprise. That private enterprise could utilize that land, and they, it would be a benefit to the taxpayer. And I think that, given that it is the free market between two freely-acting citizens coming together as peers, that is what creates wealth. In contrast, when the city of Ogden, who has, who's under-
Mr. Beely, is this about, is this regarding the Ogden Bend Master Plan?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's about utilization of resources and of Ogden's resources and the, really, I'm questioning the audacity of Ogden's competition with the free market. And the whole principle of Ogden owning assets like, you know, property, like golf courses and whatnot, I think there, you know, there could be, I like walking along that river, and I must say, but Ogden must realize that when it engages in a transaction, it is, does not do so as two free individuals due to, for example, one has eggs, maybe raising eggs illegally according to Ogden City Code, but someone else, another Ogden citizen buys them, they have a transaction that profits both individuals. It's made by two peers. In contrast, Ogden has guns, Ogden has rights, letters, $500 a day fines, and is the judge, jury, and executioner. When Ogden engages in economic transactions, Ogden does not do so as two free individuals do, as I have previously described. And I think this lack of equivalence is lost on this council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beely. Doesn't look like there's anyone else online. Okay. Let's, just really quick, can you address the single-family dwelling issue?
Yes, so, the, this is a mixed-use master plan, and as I mentioned before, the desire is to have a variety of housing types in there, townhomes, apartments, mixed-use buildings, single-family homes. The plan, you know, and those other types have been built in the area, the single-family homes, there hasn't been any single-family home projects in there. So, the plan is to designate an area, a couple of areas where there would be just single-family homes. If they, if the city were to designate the area on 18th and Wall for single-family homes, there'd be several consequences to doing that. You know, we would have to have a different partner, Lotus isn't in the business of doing that. I don't know that that particular corner is really the best place for single-family homes, being along Wall Avenue there. This is redevelopment area, and in order to generate the tax increment for it, then you need to have a certain amount of development, and so that has an impact on that. So, that wasn't the vision when the plan was adopted. We're keeping the main vision, we're just rearranging things. So, that'd be a pretty big change to the vision if the, if the council wanted to do, or the board wanted to do that. And, yeah, there'd be some consequences to doing that.
And if you could address, just while you're here, the, we'll, I don't remember which slide it is, but the view shed, I guess, around the park?
Yeah, let me show that. So, you can have, you can have apartments, you can have single-family homes, you can have different kinds of uses adjacent to parks. In this particular case, you would see that in most of the housing types abutting that would be single-family homes. On the, on the west side of the park could be single-family homes, on the north it'd be 18th Street, on the east it'd be Grant Avenue, and then there would be apartments on the other side of Grant Avenue. And then, existing on the south side, you have apartments there. So, I think you've got a variety of things, but the main use that would be adjacent to the park would be single-family.
And then, quickly, I think, and I think I know the answer to this, but I think one of the reasons why we haven't developed the park is that it hasn't been our property on that side, so that, I think your first slide, maybe? Yeah, yeah, sorry, go back to that first slide, or that one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, and maybe the ownership here, so, yeah, the current planned park site, the city owns part of it, the Jensen's who spoke owned the other part of that, and the proposed site is still a mixed bag of property ownership. So, there's going to have to be negotiations between property owners in order to make all that happen.
Can I ask a clarifying question? All up on-
Yes, please.
So, when you were saying that developers, especially the one that we're working with, isn't in the business of making single, or building single-family homes, so are you suggesting that it might be possible, when Ogden City owns that property instead, will we do our own development like we do in other places, like with Infill and stuff like that?
Yes, that's-
That's what I was thinking you were saying.
Yes.
So, I think that's kind of an answer to Emily's question, too, is that when we can't get a developer to build that type of housing, then the city has had to take that on themselves and like, say, just do an RFP for developers to build that kind of product, so.
Yes, yes, and that'd be our anticipation of how this would work out, is that-
Yeah.
We would obtain that area and Ogden Housing would, or, yeah, our community development would build single-family homes there.
Can I add to that?
Please, ma'am.
This particular developer has expressed a lot of interest in building single-family owner-occupied product on other sites. I think it's very site-specific as to where it's appropriate, the goal being, you know, scale and site planning, et cetera. So, for this particular one, I think it's more suited for what you're seeing, but the, in other areas, they've been really vocal and willing to entertain that.
Great. Thanks for addressing those, I appreciate that. Any other questions from the board members?
I don't have any more questions, but I guess I have a comment to the idea that we just let the free market do everything. In that case, we wouldn't have any parks in the city at all, so, that's an option.
And additionally, it's visionary that we have property that the city owns that we can try to put in a park that is going to be beneficial to that community and to the rest of the city as well. So, I think the city's done a good job in planning some, you know, many of those things. I don't know that we're in competition and everything. We do have some property there that will help us if we do indeed begin to develop that parcel for single-family homes. So, there's a lot of give and take that's got to take place there.
Yeah, and I'd say that other than the parks and the trails and the streets, the ultimate goal would be that these would be, the land would be privately owned.
And I can appreciate the comments. I do appreciate that. I actually think we understand the free enterprise pretty well, so. Any other questions?
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-4.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Hire and second by Board Member Myers to adopt Resolution 2024-4. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Myers?
Aye.
Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Board Member Chaburka?
Aye.
Board Member Hire?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye. That passes. Comments from the executive director?
Nope.
Comments from the board members? Yeah? Nope?
We adjourn.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Myers, second by Board Member Hire, to adjourn. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.